Good evening. The Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees regular meeting for Tuesday, April 27, 2021 will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Stewart.
Here.
Trustee Monahan.
Here.
Clerk Vorba, here. Trustee Dorchevitz.
Here.
Trustee Kermy.
Here.
Treasurer Clinton.
Here.
Supervisor Heisen.
Here.
All present, we have a quorum.
Very good. Tonight's pledge of allegiance, how about Brent?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move for the approval of the agenda for Tuesday, April 27, 2021.
Motion is made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Monahan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item D is approval of the consent agenda. Comments or questions by the board?
Yes, we need to take the bills off because there's a couple of things that aren't going to be approved.
Take the bills off?
Yeah, so they're not approved for payment. The first one is 2081 McAllister rentals. We paid for insurance and that's going to be investigated so that Patrick Felreth said take it off.
That particular thing?
That one.
Okay.
So in other words, it doesn't get paid and the bill run.
Okay.
Okay.
The second one is 2445 for ASC. I haven't received an answer on that one. The next one is Plant Moran, 2750, have not received an answer. And Watkins Ross for 2,000, no answer. That answer has to come from staff, so.
Okay, well, I. Watkins Ross is, we have to have that in order to do our.
Actuary.
Yes.
But there's two, there's two Watkins Rosses in there. There's one with Plant Moran on their summary of 6,200, and then there's one for 2,000 from Watkins Ross itself. I think it's a simple explanation, so Ginger should be telling me what that is, why it's on both. That's all. And is Watkins Ross required each year?
Yes.
Okay, that answer is part of it. So let's hold those and we'll wait and see what an answer happens.
So you're moving for the approval of the bills except for those things?
Except for ASC, which is police department, I think.
2045.
Yeah, and 2750, Plant Moran, and 2,000, Watkins Ross.
Did you review the bills this month?
Yes.
Okay.
Why weren't these resolved with the very responsive clerk Jerry Vorba before this meeting instead of taking our time, N O W?
I don't know. Ask him, his staff, she works for him.
Yeah.
Ginger more rarity.
We're in, we're in deep prep for.
Yeah, so you're busy.
Yeah, audit.
Okay, well, so, is that all?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
So there's a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
The consent agenda?
The consent agenda.
Yeah.
Minutes, I had a comment on the minute.
Please.
Two comments. One is very good, very thorough, but there's a small mistake, I think, in a comment I made.
I should approve the bills.
Shoot, where was it? It said, I inquired about the cost per square inch for concrete and it was, it should be cost per square foot.
Okay, anything else on the consent agenda?
So is the motion then to approve except for these four things?
Yes, approve all bills for payment except for those.
I'm going to remove my second on that.
Okay, so we have a motion, we need a second.
Second.
Very well. I will ask that the consent agenda vote be a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Stewart.
Yes.
Trustee Monahan.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Okay, so we're voting to.
To approve as amended.
As amended.
As amended, yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisen.
No.
Clerk Vorba, no. Motion carries.
Next up is public comment, limited to three minutes. Anyone in the audience would like to speak at this time, you have three minutes. Yeah, as a matter of fact, before.
Pick him up, take your man.
Before he begins, let me just tell everybody, we are starting out tonight with a brand new sound system, so we are still learning the system. If you come up to the podium, there's no need to touch anything. This is, there's one bar in front of you and that's picking up all the sound. See like where I am right now, you can still hear me, there's nothing in my hand, nothing up my sleeve, it's working very well so far. If you're watching at home, the cameras are not quite functional yet, they are in a fixed position, they cannot rotate, I understand, we are working on that, but this is still a vast improvement over where we were before, and the two chiefs have wireless microphones now as well, and they are activated by pushing the button. You're hopefully both red right now, so you know what to do and make yourselves green. So I will not take away from Mr. Zantop's time. Good evening.
You say make us green? Are we supposed to?
No, you're fine. They have red and green. We're still good.
My name is Mr. Wayne Zantop, I'm in Concord Drive in Plymouth. On January 6, 2021, thousands of people attended a rally at the Michigan State Capitol. There were families, veterans, pastors, and leading prayers and patriots from all walks of life that love this country in attendance. There was no destruction of property, burning of buildings, looting, or any other acts of insurrection that we have seen in other cities that have been described as peaceful protest. I know because I was there and I have no regrets. At the April 6 meeting, Township Board meeting, trustee Stewart described the people that attended the event as domestic terrorists. I spent six years in the military and I'm of no means a terrorist or any other, there were any other terrorists in attendance at this event. People that love this country are getting tired of these false accusations being called terrorists. Mr. Stewart, we are deeply offended by your remarks and I believe you owe us an apology.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do I get to respond?
You can respond at the end of the meeting if you'd like.
Oh, okay, all right.
I don't want to turn this into a political debate.
My name is Dan Callahan, live in Clemens Drive, been a resident for 21 years. I'm a United States Marine Corps veteran, I served my country with two combat tours in Vietnam. I am a conservative Republican and support the Constitution of the United States of America. As guaranteed by the First Amendment, I have the right to free speech and the right to assemble. Mr. Stewart has no right to refer to me as a domestic terrorist because I am allowed at a rally at Michigan Capitol. Furthermore, I question his affiliation to the Republican Party. Mr. Stewart, you owe me and every other veteran in Plymouth Township an apology. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? The retired former trustee.
Extraordinaire.
Extraordinaire.
Retired former.
You still, you only have three minutes.
Out the path for you.
And we're taking your time.
And ex-attorney.
You know, there's no such thing as.
No, no, you can't get rid of it.
Well, I don't have my bar card anymore.
Oh, wow. Gee.
Honorable members of this board, I apologize for speaking to this agenda item now, but I have a commitment that I have to go home for, so I thought I'd take this opportunity to express my very sincere and strong support for the agenda item regarding the formal designation of a neighborhood park at the nine acre public property at Beck and Ever Trail in Powell. And I'd like the record to reflect the support when this last came up before this board, and that included a number of distinguished community-minded organizations such as the chair and the members of the Township Environmental Leadership Commission, the chair of the Township Historic District Commission, the Trailwood Garden Club, the Plymouth Community Arts Council, the Canton Community Foundation, the Detroit Greenways Coalition, and then there were others, individual citizens and so forth. I strongly recommend you take this action tonight. I believe it's necessary and appropriate to follow the public's will as expressed in the various recreation surveys and plans, fulfills the master plan that was newly updated, and I think the past number of months have shown us with this pandemic that we need more recreation opportunities, more walking paths, more bike trails, more bike opportunities to get out even if there is no pandemic, but certainly with this upon us, just confirms the point. So I strongly recommend, I look forward to hearing that you will have approved this and to give the people of this township who've expressed their support for this, that they believe this is something that we need, they want, improve recreation, just like you're doing in the township park with the path that you're repaving and other actions you've taken. Final comment, I love this sound system, so thank you very much.
Isn't that great? Thank you very much, Jack. Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Martin Friedberg, I'm a seven-year resident of Plymouth Township. I wanted to mirror Mr. Dempsey's remarks regarding the park at the corner of Beck and Inver Trail. It's a wonderful area adjacent to the current park that we have, of course, so it was a nice add-on to that. I think as I look, in the seven years I've looked at this township, I see a lot of encroachment, if you will, of more housing, more housing, more light industry coming in. I think it's important that the board act to preserve green space that we have available. This is already owned by the township, so there's no outlay of money here. It's not that you have to come up with 200,000 or a half a million dollars to buy this property, it's already ours, just a matter of formalizing it into a park that can later be, you know, whatever the board should decide should happen with that piece in terms of development for use by pedestrians, by bicyclists, by joggers, by walkers, and so on. So I want to encourage you to do that. I also note that, I believe it's Wabasco Corporation, you might.
Wabasto.
Wabasto, thank you, has planted 80 trees on that property.
Well, they did plant them.
For the township, they've made that investment of their own free will.
Well, they did that as part of their site approval, so.
That's true, but still, it was of their own free will, they agreed to that.
They did.
So they, you know, they're making an investment in the community and we're glad to see that happen. So I would want to encourage the board to move forward with that, formalize this, preserve the green space that we have because it's not coming back. Once it's developed into anything else, you don't get it back again, it's just that simple. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I add to that comment?
Sure.
Briefly. Driving Hagerty Road like I do every day, between Schoolcraft and Plymouth Road, there are so many cars now parked at Wabasto. They were parked in the right lane, southbound, on Hagerty Road, next to the storage facility. Thus, there were only two lanes, north and southbound, on Hagerty Road between Schoolcraft and Plymouth. I'm supportive of our economic development with Wabasto, and the personnel director there has hosted me in the facility three times, and she's waiting post-pandemic to have an open house. But I think we need to, I really think you mentioned a subject that we should be spending a lot of time on that, it's very important, and I think we should be talking about it tonight. So thank you for coming.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on. Anybody else in the public comment section? I don't know what that was. That was, okay. It's just, we're hearing lots of new noises that we haven't heard before up here. Okay.
Wait, I can do that at well.
I think it's Avon calling.
You get a treat, I think, or something.
Catlows.
All right, we're going to move on now to new business. So item one is something that we've been looking to do for quite a while, and that's get an update from our assessing department on what is the assessing process, what does it look like, what does it involve, and then also to talk about some of the more recent developments in the board of review, okay? People who come to appeal their assessments on their personal properties and their homes. And the folks are here from our assessing office, Aaron Powers and Tracy Haley. Now, these folks are not township employees, they are independent contractors that we have hired, and they have offices here at Township Hall, so if you have any assessing questions, you can still come and talk to them just as you would any other department. But they are independent contractors with a company called Wayne County Assessing, which has nothing to do with Wayne County government.
WCA Assessing.
Okay, yes, so we just call them WCA, otherwise it can get very confusing. So tonight, we have Aaron and Tracy, and take it away.
Well, thank you, supervisor, I appreciate that, and thank you, board members, for the opportunity to come and go over some of this information with you this evening. And I understand that trustee Dorchevitz has the, has the presentation working, so we'll just kind of move from there.
Okay.
But just in brief, what we'd like to kind of do this evening is to go through, and to provide you with a departmental update, informing you the information that's been transposing or going on in the department for the last year or so, and answering any questions that you may have, in addition to just some simple information relative to the activities of the department. So, moving on to the next slide, the primary function of the assessor's office is really twofold, and this goes down to our core principles. And the first is, of course, to annually assess all property in the township equitably at 50% of true cash value in accordance with the constitution of the state of Michigan. And in addition to annually assessing all the property in the township, it's always kind of funny, as an assessor, I'm very familiar with tax law, and General Property Tax Act in the beginning says everything in the state of Michigan is taxable unless it's expressively exempted. So in addition, obviously, not only making sure that we're equitably assessing all the properties, we also have to administer all the incentives and exemptions that are necessary in the tax law as well. And they're not only the exemption from the general property tax, but also from certain millages that may occur as well. So that's another big component of what it is that we do. Speaking of the annual assessment of property, what we've got here illustrated for you this evening is the annual assessment of the properties here in Plymouth Township, which is 12,129 separate parcels of property, includes both real and personal property. And a lot of people don't realize that in the state of Michigan, all property, as I indicated, is assessable, which is inclusive of personal property. Now, our household goods are exempt under the statute, but goods and tangible items that are owned by companies are not. And of course, that's personal property in effect, and there's a lot of exemptions as it relates to personal properties, and some property is exempt and some is not, so personal property makes up the second largest classification of property that we have here in the township, comprising about 10% of the total amounts of parcel count. Then, of course, in addition to that, we have industrial and commercial, but by far and large, the largest percent of the types of property that we have here in the township are the residential properties comprising of 85%. The next slide is going to kind of go on and show what that actually means in a breakdown of our assessed value here in the township. The township in 2021 has an assessed value of just over 2.4 billion. That's significant, it's actually larger than many of the 83 counties in all of the state of Michigan, it's a very large assessed value. The vast majority of that's made up by residential parcels, which is 1.7 billion, a little bit more than that. And then, as comparatively to where we had personal property making up a large percentage of the actual parcel count, it only makes up about 4% of the total assessed value. Plymouth Township, as you're very well aware, has a very large industrial base, and that industrial makes up almost 20% of, I'm sorry, 16% of the entirety of the value, just under 400 million on 376 million, as well as the commercial and resulting 100 million plus in personal property. So I spoke briefly about values and assessed values and the different classes of property and the parcel counts that make up that value, but a couple of terms that I think people are very often to hear as we talk about assessments is, of course, assessed value. And assessed value and SEV are relatively synonymous with each other. The assessed value is actually the value that's determined by the assessor initially, and then the SEV is an acronym which stands for state equalized value. Your assessed value kind of goes through and goes through this process of equalization, which is a checks and balance system that's in existence that has a county equalization department as well as a state equalization that occurs, actually, on May 1st, that essentially takes that assessed value, goes through that checks and balance system to then ultimately become the state equalized value. Kind of reminds me of when I was a kid watching this as a bill and how it kind of goes up the, I forgot whatever that was on, but.
Schoolhouse Rock, man.
So that's kind of your assessed value making its way up to being a state equalized value is going through that process of checks and balances of county equalization and ultimately state equalization. But assessed value by statute and by the constitution of the state of Michigan is equal to 50% of market value. Market value is defined in the General Property Tax Act, but for all intents and purposes, it really just means true cash value of what a willing buyer and seller, each equally understanding what the property would be good for, would be able to transact the property for without any undue influences, and the statute has some other caveats, but generally what most people refer to is what a property's worth. Then there's a value we don't hear a lot about, and that's capped value. We oftentimes, we oftentimes think of capped value and taxable value somewhat interchangeably, but taxable value by statute is really simple, it's either lower of what the capped value or the assessed value is. That's it, pretty simple, it's just whichever's lower. But it's that capped value that as a component of proposal aid being adopted in 1994 that actually is the basis of what taxes are paid on, and it's also that value which is only adjusted most typically by the rate of inflation on a particular year. Now, if something should happen to a property such as physical law, physical additions or losses, or if a property transfers, then that capped value can ultimately change greater than that rate of inflation. But capped value is important, and the reason it's important is it's obviously the basis of which people pay taxes on, and it's oftentimes, especially in a very appreciative economy that we're undergoing now, much less than what that assessed value is. That's the whole basis of the Michigan general property tax system, how we have those capped values that are incrementally capped from the amount that they can increase on a particular In addition to values. Spoke about our annual assessment and our assessed value or SEV, and we determine that value every single year for every single property in the township, and we do so most often utilizing a statistical mass appraisal method. The same method that every assessor's office uses everywhere in the state of Michigan, it's mandated in regards to the methodologies that we can use. We don't use anything different than anyone else, all assessors in the state utilize the same methodologies, and ultimately what it entails is the utilization of three widely accepted approaches to value. The first is the cost approach, the second is a sales comparison approach, and the third is the income approach. Now, because we have to do mass appraisal, appraising 12,000 properties on a yearly basis, we have some statistical mass appraisal models that use these core approaches to value that ultimately result in the final determinant value for each of the properties in the township. And as I indicated before, the three approaches to value are the cost approach, the sales approach, and the income approach. Now, we're good to go to the next slide, and the cost approach is actually one of the bases that's used on the vast majority of all residential properties in the state, and it's based off of the Assessors Manual, which is published by the State Tax Commission, it's amended annually by the State Tax Commission to ultimately reflect costs of not only materials but labor that occur by county throughout the entirety of the state. So every single year, the State Tax Commission will go through and make a study of what material costs and labor costs are affecting the, and have those costs reflected into the State Assessors Manual, which is the basis of how we complete our calculations. Not only do we use the cost approach, but we also use a sales comparison approach for the vast majority of our residential properties to actually determine our final valuation. The next slide's kind of important, we're going to touch on the sales comparison approach here briefly, but the next slide's important because what the next slide is showing is a standard residential property here in the township, and it shows the information that the assessor's office maintains on the property. This is what's referred to as a property record card. We have a property record card for every single property in the township, whether it be commercial, industrial, or residential, and this is a standard type of card that kind of shows the information that we maintain. This is really only a scratch of the surface for the information that we actually have, but going back on the methodology utilizing the cost approach kind of shows some of the information that we have. Now here, this is the first page, and this is just a typical printout that's available for every single property, and I highly recommend folks have the opportunity to review their property record card regularly, but it just kind of shows a little bit of the information that's there, such as previous transactions, property address, ownership information, information on public utilities, land value information, and any previous assessment history is also indicated here on the first page. In additionally, in addition to that, we also have a who were, a who when and what, which is just kind of an internal record of when we might have actually been to a property, inspected a property, seen a property, done something with a property. And then, as well as our basis of our land valuation is also here on the front page. Moving to the second page of the property record card. This is also, like I said, the property record card is just the abbreviated portion of what it is that we actually have, but this is some additional information that's more relative to the building on the property. We have a sketch of the property. When I say sketch, what we have is a typical line drawing of the actual structure that exists on the property, and if there's multiple structures, we'll have multiple sketches, of course, but it goes through essentially those items that are within the State Tax Commission manual that kind of go through and provide pricing information and costing information for us to be able to utilize that cost approach. It kind of goes through and gives us information on the physical characteristics of the structure. It tells us the square footages of each of the individual types, whether it's a two-story basement, a one-story slab, a garage, a concrete-covered porch, or an overhang. It basically goes through and provides us with the shape size and construction type, foundation type, as well as limited information on the interior of the structures as well, such as the amount of bathrooms, composition of those bathrooms, and how they're put in, number of baths and things such as that. So in addition to not only having the property record card, we have very succinct calculations for each one of these particular properties that shows how our reproduction cost was actually attained by utilizing the State Assessors Manual. Now, that's important, but it's really just costs, and obviously, things cost differently in Wayne County than they do in Barragie County and the U.P. or someplace else. So we have to not only make sure that we're utilizing the appropriate costs specific to the county, but more importantly, property values widely vary between Plymouth Township and Detroit or any other municipality in Wayne County, right? So our costs are very specific to the county, but we have to look at specifically what the actual valuations are within the township. We go a little bit step further than that, as all assessors do. The next slide will show how, in a typical residential valuation, what ultimately we do is we take those costs that are published by the Assessors Manual, those costs are adjusted by a county multiplier, and that county multiplier, again, is encompassing the most recent study of information as it relates to labor costs and material costs, and then it has what refers to as an ECF. It feels weird coughing in public, now I apologize, it's just one of those things, trying to get the frog in my throat for the last couple of minutes, and anyways. So ECF, ECF is an acronym that stands for economic condition factor. And the economic condition factor is ultimately how it is that we provide the sales comparison approach to also temper that cost approach to our final determination of value on primarily residential properties. Next slide. So economic condition factor. So it's the basis of depreciated costs by using the sales comparison approach for similar property types. So we go through these statistical studies utilizing similar properties by geographic area, I'm sorry. By geographic area for each of the different neighborhoods that we have here in the township. Now, we have, thank you very much, I appreciate that, Jerry. So we have all of these geographical areas established for the type of construction here in the township, so each of the different neighborhoods have a specific size. Have a particular economic condition neighborhood or a neighborhood that's established. What a neighborhood is, is really a group of properties that share similar, that share similar contributions to value. They all have the same school district, they all have the same types and similarities of influences to value, detractions to value. We go through, and we group these properties by neighborhood, and then ultimately what we do is we study the properties that are sold within that particular neighborhood every single year, and we make an analysis utilizing residual statistical model of how those sales prices actually compare to the cost manual that's established by the state. And in doing so, we can have a resulting economic condition factor, and that economic condition factor is utilized to therefore take how the state manual would be reflected in sales and. would be reflected in sales and appropriately adjust those costs to the remaining properties obviously haven't sold, right? So we're able to take that information and make an analysis of that. So by using those two methods, we're able to essentially determine the true cash value of residential properties. Now, other methods, such as income-producing properties, we utilize income approaches to value that's often most times done on commercial properties, sometimes industrial properties. But the methodology that we showed, or that we chose to provide you with an example for this evening is, which is the vast majority is the residential property examples. Moving on, we talked about assessed values and how we determine that. The second value that I briefly touched on was the cap value. I should probably stay close to the bar. So the cap value, it's a mathematically computed value, which we annually do, and it's essentially the previous year's taxable value plus any additions minus, I'm sorry, minus any losses plus any additions, and then also adjusted by the rate of inflation. Now, that rate of inflation is determined annually by the State Tax Commission. That rate of inflation is for all properties in the state of Michigan. So if there's an inflation rate multiplier that's affecting Plymouth Township, it's affecting every single other jurisdiction in the state of Michigan, and it affects all properties. Now, if a property is experiencing any additions or losses, that could also change that cap value up or down, in addition, if the property was to sell or transfer. Now, we have about 550 on average transfers a year. Now, transfers of ownership are just that. It doesn't necessarily mean that their property has a physical sale, but it could also just be a transfer between entities or other issues. So the resulting issue that we have is the taxable value, which is the basis of what property taxes are calculated upon, and it's either lower of the SEV or the capped value. Now, we can move on to not only those properties that we assess, but all the remaining properties as well. And another core function of our department is obviously to administer the exemptions. Now, there are multitudes of different types of exemptions in the General Property Tax Act, and I think the one that most people are familiar with is the principal residence exemption. And that's an exemption on an individual's principal residence that they own and occupy and that they plan to return to. And that's an exemption which exempts them from a certain portion of the school operating tax, or the eighteen mills operating tax. In addition to that, we spoke about personal property, and a very popular, a very well-used exemption is for small business property owners. And that's for any owner that has $80,000 true cash value of assets, whether it be commercial or industrial, they can qualify for that as well. In addition to not only small business, we also have, which is very common here in Plymouth Township, is EMPP, or eligible manufacturing personal property, and that's for manufacturers, and that kicks in as well. And then, of course, we have a litany of other types of exemptions which we administer. And that would be federal, state, county, and municipal exemptions. We have charitable exemptions, schools, educational, this is kind of a, a brief list of different types of entities that the state legislature has determined if they meet specific criteria could be exempt. And then lastly on that list, there are two different exemptions as well. They're slightly different. The veterans and the poverty exemption. By statute, it's actually the Board of Review that has the authority to grant either a exemption for poverty or for a veterans exemption.
Excuse me. Thank you. You're being very disruptive. I can hear your phone, and you're talking to people in the audience. If you have a personal conversation, please take it outside. Continue.
With those two exemptions, they are a little bit different because they are only granted by the Board of Review. The Board of Review has the legislative authority to grant those exemptions. And veterans exemption are for those veterans that are 100% disabled or determined to be unemployable by the Department of Veterinary, Veterans Affairs, I'm sorry, and/or determined that they have to receive community assistance for specially-adapted housing. And then the poverty exemption is also determined by the legislature. There's very succinct, strict rules that municipalities have to establish to adopt a hardship or a poverty exemption policy. I know I was before you, just a few months ago, as it related to some of those legislative changes that were required for those individuals that are in poverty. And we'll go to the next slide. And just kind of a year and a glance of what it is that we have is, you know, of course, we have to certainly understand the physical characteristics of all the properties in the township that we're assessing. So we go out on all the different permits that are necessary to review the physical inspections of those types of properties. So 2020, between 2020 and 2021, there was over 906 permits reviewed, 549 property transfer affidavits reviewed and processed. I know that we're going to touch on a little bit in regards to the March Board of Review appeals and how those are, got a couple of slides for that, but there's 99 2021 March Board of Review appeals, over 1,100 personal property returns filed and processed. And then a little bit of information regards to the amount of value, assessed value that was new and lost for this year, just over about $8 million of assessed value of losses of physical changes that we adjusted for for this year, and about 21.6 million of new. In 2020, we had 17 Michigan tax tribunal appeals and two court of appeal, court of appeals cases that we dealt with, and over 600 principal residence affidavit exemptions. And more importantly, it's important for me to point out here that it's, it's really these folks, it's Tracy and Tina and Maryam in the assessor's office that's really pulling the weight there. I'm giving you all the presentation this evening, but please don't think that I can do this by any means without all of their help. I'm really just a small piece of this puzzle. It's Tracy and her staff that really do everything here, and I certainly want to, you know, publicly share with you my appreciation for what it is that they do.
As do we. They, they do a wonderful job. They're very, they're here every day, they're very responsive, not only to the residents, but to us as staff and department heads, so we really appreciate all the work that they do.
Thank you. I appreciate that as well, but truly, it's their department, they do a great job with it. Last two slides we have here are the 2021 March Board of Review, and it kind of shows the types of appeals that the March Board of Review considers. A number of appeals that we consider are relative to personal property, and the timing is in such in the state of Michigan that the personal property returns are not due back until late February, which is right before March Board of Review, so there's always a few that sneak into the March Board of Review to make sure that we can amend and adjust. So that's why there's a number of personal property appeals, they're not necessarily always appeals, but they're oftentimes adjustments that we're making as it relates to that. And then we have veterans exemptions that were also considered, and let's move to the next slide because I think it helps. So if we look at the total amount of the 99 appeals that were at the March Board of Review out of the 12,000 parcels that we have, you'll see that there were a number of personal property appeals and a very large amount of veterans exemptions. Those are individuals who have to make application yearly. The legislature determined that for an individual to be granted a veterans exemption, they have to apply every year. And very rarely does it change, but occasionally someone's benefits can be changed through the VA. I've seen it a handful of times, and maybe they lose their benefits. But ultimately, they make up a large percentage of the appeals that we have to listen to, that the board listens to. And then we also have commercial and industrial appeals and residential valuation appeals as well, which frankly is actually a small percentage of that. The veterans exemptions and poverty exemptions, of course, are also appeals that have to be, poverty or hardship exemptions are appeals that have to be applied for on an annual basis that is the authority of Board of Review to.
So before you go away from that slide, the veterans exemption, there was 30, does that include widowed spouses of veterans who are eligible for the same benefit?
Yes.
All right.
That's actually my final slide, so I welcome any questions of the trustees.
So I guess one question I have is, have you noticed with COVID, have you noticed any increase, decrease, any major changes from previous years in the number of appeals?
I don't think necessarily with the number of appeals. And when COVID started last year, I mean, it was March, it was right, in, in 2020, a lot of the executive orders came out while we were in the process of doing boards of review. And at that time, everybody was scrambling for instruction regards to how to complete boards of review and conduct boards of review from Lansing and things like that. It was, we were trying to figure out, in some places, we had our boards of reviews concluded, some we did not. The amounts weren't any greater or any less, I don't believe or feel, I think it was pretty much typical. What type of impact on property values we'll be seeing is something that ultimately, we're really good at seeing what's occurred and analyzing those statistics and making our determinations from that, and there just hasn't been a lot of transactional activity. Now, residential properties are still incredibly
Hot.
High and moving, but there are certain factors of the commercial economy that certainly have benefactor and impacted, and we're trying to get a handle on how those are coming through.
Another, another question that I have, and, and I get this once in a while from variety of sources, is what's your, what would be your opinion of a reassessment of every parcel in the township? Do you know what I'm talking about? So what, just briefly explain that and what would be like the pros and cons?
Certainly, look, there's a difference between a reinspection and a reassessment, okay? A reass, a reassessment is actually, it's very succinctly detailed by the State Tax Commission what that entails, which is an ultimate revaluation of every parcel, either in its entirety or by property class. Tax Commission would entail then re-establishment of all land values in a particular area, re-establishment of ECFs, as well as physical verification of all the property data, moving in that facet and going from there. A reinspection is a little bit different. A reinspection ultimately is essentially going out and confirming the physical data that's in existence and making sure that our characteristics on the properties are appropriate. What I normally recommend and think, and what my thoughts are on that, is to do a, a study. And for example, would I suggest that every municipality go through a reassessment every 10 years? Absolutely not. And, and the reason being is because it may or may not be necessary. What I would suggest is a sampling of a particular types of, or a sample of properties and interpolating those results. If you were to go through and to sample 1% or 3% of the properties and try to determine whether or not it makes sense to go through the process, the very arduous task of doing a reassessment, that makes sense, and that's ultimately what we've, that we've noticed we've done. If we go through and do a sample, and that sample is indicative of the fact that something needs to be addressed as it relates to physical characteristics, that's usually what's found. Is it necessary that we have to go through and reconduct analyses to recreate assessing neighborhoods and reestablish land values and basically start from scratch? Rarely is that ever the case. We've historically had clients that we felt that that was necessary to do, but it's pretty rare. That reinspection, however, oftentimes by going through and making sure that the physical characteristics of the properties are up to date, can ultimately determine that there is some additional additions or losses that could be found in regards to doing so. Okay?
So when was the last reinspection and sample done in Plymouth Township on residential properties?
Or to 2000.
Okay. And when were the property record cards last up, updated on a wholesale basis?
On a wholesale basis is kind of difficult to really ascertain. Now, there's probably between 3.5 to 5% that's updated yearly. So although there's not been a complete review since 2000, there's a large portion, almost 1,000 of the 1,200 parcels that were physically inspected this year in one fashion or reviewed in a particular fashion, whether it be a ultimate desk inspection or a physical, a physical inspection. Is it safe to assume that in the last 21 years, almost 100% of the township, and I say almost 100% because some properties are going to go through physical changes, and then there's some properties that are probably exactly how they were 40 years ago? I just don't know which. So there's a small percentage every single year that gets reviewed in the same fashion as what a reinspection would.
So are we due for a reinspection, in your opinion, after 21 years?
We'd have to conduct a study and find a sample amount of properties, and then ultimately have a result of what that sample would indicate to us. If we were to go through and sample 1 or 3% of a particular type of property, whether, you know, residential, commercial, industrial, and then we'd have to interpolate those results to determine if it would be worthwhile to do so.
So, were you finished?
I have several other questions, but go ahead on that.
So about 85% of the, of the applicants got their appeals approved. So what did they do?
You're talking about residential, 85%?
Well, no, just granted 84 out of 99 total appeals, right?
Well, but look, it's 12 got denied out of 20.
Right, residential. Oh, so 12 out of 20, okay, let's focus on residential, that's a good point. So what did, the, the people that got them granted, what did they do?
What'd they do right?
Right? What did the other ones do wrong?
It's, it's, it's difficult for me to tell you that. And here's where I'm coming at from my experience. I've, I've provided presentations to hundreds of Board of Review members, I've trained Board of Review members in Wayne County and other counties as well. And I always tell the Board of Review members that ultimately, they're there to weigh the evidence. By law, the assessments deem to be accurate, but at the same point, assessors use statistical mass appraisal to do so. We get it right the vast majority of the time, but we don't always get it right. All right? Oftentimes, there's information about the property that we're unaware of, whether it be from an external op, external ops license, a external effect on value, maybe, you know, a textbook example is, you know, a residential property that's next to a bar that's loud all night long, or something along those lines.
Does that make it worth more or less?
Well, not to be, multiply. So, or, or, or maybe there's the fact that there is a property that is, is exceptionally deteriorated adjacent to the property, or there's some sort of negative influence on the property that we may not be taking into consideration. That's oftentimes the case. A number of cases are also the fact that the physical characteristics of the property are incorrect. So we say that there's three bathrooms, or three full bathrooms, and maybe there's only two and a half. And then ultimately, what also happens as well is that we're really great at valuing similar homogeneous properties that are always the same. What we're not always the great as, which makes perfect logical sense, is there's always that one-of-a-kind property that probably doesn't sell, and it's our educated guess in regards to what the indicated value of that property is and someone else's estimate of what that property is. One-of-a-kind properties, whether it be, you know, we, we, we assess all properties in every municipality annually, right? So, I mean, if it's a 700,000 square foot Class III biosafety laboratory, or a airplane hangar, or the types of properties that you can envision never transact, we still value those as well. But more often than not, it's something odd or something that we're just not aware of. And a lot of times, it's communicating that information to us so that we can understand what it is, or to the Board of Review members, and they ultimately make a decision on, on what's appropriate.
All right, several questions. Let's start with the PRE, primary residence exemption. In some parts of the state, it's widely abused where people aren't really living there, but they're getting the benefit and they're filing taxes because they don't want to pay income tax in Florida. How widespread do you think that is in Plymouth? I know people have done it. And what are you doing to monitor that, where someone is really not filing a state income tax here, really living in Florida, but getting the benefit of the PRE in Plymouth, Michigan?
Let me tell you, there's a couple of things as it relates to that. Florida has a similar principal residence exemption laws, what Michigan does. I've probably talked to assessors in Florida more so than any other assessors in any other state where we confer with each other as it relates to that exemption. Secondarily, you know, the exemption itself, we take the exemption application, and it's on an affidavit that the individual swears and attests to that that's their principal residence, and if there's no prima facie evidence for us to not believe so, we don't search or research into that more so. We have to be made aware. And secondly, it's the county treasurer and Michigan Department of Treasury that ultimately researched those items. So when an individual applies for a principal residence exemption, it's their social security number that's ultimately checked against their state income tax return, and the Michigan Department of Treasury quarterly? How often do they do it? Is it monthly or quarterly?
I receive about every three months.
But every three months, we get a list of all the properties in the county, and, and this particular municipality as well, that the Michigan Department of Treasury has denied principal residence exemption for. And that would be after the fact that they would either send a letter out to the applicant, and the applicant would either not respond, or there was a hearing that was conducted and they were found out to be entitled to that exemption. When that's the case, the, 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 the taxes are adjusted, and I'm sure Treasurer Clinton will let you know as well, that usually they're adjusted with penalties and interest, which are significant oftentimes. It's, it never really fares well to apply for an exemption that's not appropriate because the, the penalties and interest are, they're a lot.
So how many did we have? So how many did we have in 2020 where we had to deny the P R E?
Were we personally denied? I could run numbers, but it's under a dozen.
More than I thought we'd get, so.
Now, we probably had more than a dozen that were denied after Treasury or after an entity that has, if we go through and if there's two names and they both have 100% P R E, we'll make an application for denial. We have some specific evidence that really makes into a question that we have to deny, we deny. More often than not, those denials come directly from Department of Treasury.
Okay. Manufacturing personal property, since that's no longer taxed, I think, we're past the moratorium, or almost, you still track it?
Absolutely. Yes. Because what happens is it has to be filed every single year, although it's not tracked. And essentially, what eligible manufacturing personal property is, is all property which is acquired by a manufacturing entity since 2012, now is exempt from ad valorem taxation, but there is a specific tax that those taxpayers have to pay that's billed directly by the state of Michigan Department of Treasury.
That's the emergency something tax, what's it called? Emergency services?
Essential services.
Essential services, sorry.
That's the essential services tax. So what happens is that entities, industrial entities, have to file with the local assessor annually, and then we transmit that information electronically to the Department of Treasury, who ultimately will go forth and determine a entity's essential services tax. Why it's different is because Ford gets one tax bill. Ford might have properties all over the state, but they get one tax bill. So we all collectively send our information to Lansing, where they ultimately determine the final tax bill for Ford. Additionally, we also have to get that information so that we can make sure that we submit to Lansing for the reimbursement. So municipalities get a reimbursement for the loss of revenue from these eligible manufacturing personal property tax. So that reimbursement is also calculated based off of the numbers that we submit annually to the state.
All right. So tonight, we have an industrial facilities exemption, where the applicant has asked for industrial facilities exemption on personal property. Is that appropriate? Since we don't have, we don't levy ad valorem taxes on personal property?
I had actually recommended the applicant to place that on there, and I'll tell you why. Reason being is because when municipalities oftentimes consider a abatement, they oftentimes would consider the length of the abatement dependent upon the capital investment. And although the State Tax Commission oftentimes does not perceive application for personal property tax under the I F T, it's also there for illustrative purposes to actually show the capital investment that the applicant's making. Reason being is that a number of municipalities had per se to determine the length of abatement depending upon job creation as well as capital investment. And a lot of those haven't been adjusted to reflect the new E M P P statutes. And I believe in the resolution for your consideration this evening, the resolution clearly indicates that adopted by the board of trustees would be on real property only.
Okay. The property tax record, is it available online in B S and A?
Yes.
So when you go to the property that we ask the question, do you agree to the terms, it's in that section?
Yes.
All right. So everybody can take a look at it. All right. And one final question. Is it still the case that new home buyers in a particular neighborhood are paying a disproportionately higher share of taxes because of the 1994 Prop. A uncapping provision? No? So if somebody has, like in Lake Point, they have two identical houses, one just sold last year, they're paying more tax than, because they have a higher taxable value than the person next door?
You're absolutely correct.
Who'd been there 50 years.
Right.
I guess the initial portion of your question I misconstrued. You asked if there was a particular subdivision that was paying more in taxes, and I guess I got hung up on that. To answer your question more appropriately, you are absolutely correct. Now, what's very important to realize is that valuations are equitable in the state of Michigan. However, the taxable value, or the cap value, which I spoke of, which is the actual basis of taxation, that's not equitable. So since proposal A was adopted, and we have that cap that's in place, obviously, all properties that are similar increase and decrease similarly in value. Assessed value, the basis of taxation, however, being that cap or taxable value is limited by the rate of inflation, unless there's additions or losses, or as you indicated, that the property's sold. So if a property's sold more recently than another property, it could have an absolutely different assessed or taxable value, resulting in identical properties having completely different tax liabilities. And that's oftentimes misunderstood by the public. It's a very good point to bring up. But you can have identical properties anywhere in the state of Michigan, not only in Plymouth Township, absolutely anywhere in the state of Michigan that are almost identical in every single specific facet, although they can have widely disproportionate tax liabilities or taxes of the municipality, depending upon how long the property was owned.
Any other questions from the board? All right, there will be a test at the end of the night, so. Okay. Thank you very much. Please stick around for the next item. Aaron and Tracy, if you could, just in case we need your help on this
We will.
Application by Eotech, which is agenda item number two. That is the application by Eotech LLC for an industrial facilities exemption certificate. And I would assume that the board has taken a look at the cover memo tonight. We have, I believe, the attorney for Eotech, and then a representative of Eotech as well. So depending on how you want to make your presentation, the floor is yours. And just state your name and address for the record, and you don't have to wear the mask either.
Good evening. Thank you. Joe Kirdana, Chairman of the Board for Eotech, and also managing partner of the actual real estate building. So there is common ownership in the real estate and the Eotech. I know that was a question, so I just wanted to start by clearing that, that we're owners of both the business and the real estate, just through separate analyses. But we're very excited to become a part of your community. I think you guys should be happy to have us. We're going to create 150 highly technical jobs in Plymouth. We are going to have one of the most advanced holographic labs in the world, and actually, the only holographics lab of this kind in the United States of America. So it's very specialized. We create electro optics. Some of these optics are used in weapon sites, most notably, the one that killed Osama bin Laden was an Eotech scope. So we're very proud of that. And Rob O'Neill is our spokesperson, so you might see him around Plymouth every now and then, once we move in.
I am a peer.
But that being said, although we do produce those scopes, our holographics lab and the R and D that's going to be created here in the Plymouth building is going to go well beyond just holographics for weapon sites. We're working on everything from satellite technology, supercomputing, golf range finders. It's wide reaching, the amount of things we can use the holograms for. So that being said, it's a major investment. We had to do many studies before we purchased the property, vibration studies, sound studies. We have to be completely isolated in that lab where we record these images. So we're creating highly specialized rooms, we're pouring very thick concrete, we're spending a significant amount of money between, as one of your questions were about personal property, personal property and improvements on top of the real property, just under $18 million in this facility. And it's going to be state of the art and first class. So I open it up to questions from you.
So what was this building before? I know it's roughly across the street from our D P W yard, but what was, does anybody on the board remember?
Well, is it, where is it in relation to the Magna facility, which is on the north side of Port Street? East or west?
Well, most notably, we are the neighbor of Lover's Lane.
Yeah.
So this building actually used to be used for parts washing. It had a lot of, when we went in there, like drains and stuff in the floor, and I think people used to bring heavy equipment and different manufacturing type parts in there, and they would power wash them, clean them, and do all that. There was actually a little bit of environmental contamination we had to deal with as part of our rehabilitation of the property as well.
What was the name of the company?
To be honest, I don't know the company. It was a vacant building.
D and R?
No.
R and D?
Yes.
R and D?
Yeah.
R and D, yes.
I'm drawing, I'm drawing a blank.
But you were not the owner of the building at that time?
We were not. We purchased the building, and it was already vacant when we purchased it.
That previous owner did have a, just for the board's knowledge, they did have an I F T on that. And remember, we had, they left
Revoked it.
They left prior to the expiration of the I F T.
And we revoked it a couple of years ago.
Correct. Yep.
So this building did have an I F T on it at one point?
It is, yes.
What's an I F T?
Industrials facility.
Okay. We're not, we're not entertaining questions from the audience right now. So anyway, just I F T is an industrial facilities tax exemption. Okay. What makes this unique for this board is, to the best of my knowledge, I don't think we've ever granted an I F T or even had to consider it, consider one on an existing building. Typically, it's been a new building. I mean, do you think, does that ring a bell with the bomb?
There might, we'd have to go research, but there may have been over the last 25 years, a renovation.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think of who might have done it.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to picture it. They do, there was, didn't we do the one on the company that makes the powder for 3D printers?
That's Orlicon.
But that was an all new, that was a new building.
Is that a new building?
Yeah, we just, we just did that in the last five years.
Yeah. Yeah, hindsight 2020, I wish I would have started with the new building, because it's actually, this working within the confines, it's a very beautiful building, and it kind of caught our attention, because it's got a great facade. But the amount of work in this building was very obsolete, with down to, if you were to zoom over a little bit, even there, you could see the walls are crumbling around the building, the retaining walls inside the building, and we've provided pictures. It was left in a total disarray. So it's actually a pretty major undertaking, and I think a major benefit to the community to take a building that was so abused by the previous user or owner and reestablish it to being something that's highly technical and R and D based.
And they are adding about 7,000 new square feet, so there's a new component as well as the total transformation of the
I have a question. So first of all, thanks for being here, and it's exciting to see new technology come to our township. But the 150 jobs that you say you're going to create, what kind of value do they give, well, to the community in terms of, like, what a salary would be? Are they hourly jobs? Are they temporary? Are they part-time, full-time?
They're predominantly full-time. We actually are having a harder time, especially during the pandemic, of hiring. We have, some of our scientific research type people and holographics lab people, they make upwards in the hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. And our base salary starts anywhere, depending on, I mean, there's different positions within the company. But our lowest priced jobs are actually in northern Michigan. What's here is going to be highly specialized jobs. I'd say like, I can't speak to this perfectly, but about $16 an hour is an average start. Everybody gets a 401K. We do matching, and it's also health insurance eligibility. We usually do start people off as temps, only because right now, for every 100 people that we hire, about 64 quit within 90 days. And of those 64, we maintain about 30 of those. So there's a constant turnover. So what we've done is gone to using like temp services and different needs. It's not the culture we want, and that's actually kind of why we're moving, because we feel like being in Plymouth, the proximity to the expressway, being a little bit away from the Ann Arbor proper where we are now, is going to actually help to give us a broader base of people that'll appreciate that job and want to make it a career.
So is that unskilled labor, then?
No, it's, it's, well, unskilled labor, you don't necessarily have to be skilled when you start, but it is about a nine-week training, nine to 12 weeks, depending on the acuity of each individual employee. But once they're trained, they are doing highly technical jobs. And everybody has opportunity to advance within the company. So some people who've started out, you know, working just in assembly, have actually made their way all the way up into the environmental testing lab. And that's another thing we're very proud of, is we have one of the most advanced environmental testing facilities in the world for optics. So much so that the United States government has asked us to kind of help them duplicate it within their means, because they've been using our facility for testing.
Tracy or Aaron, is the, is the tax abatement on the incremental value, or is it on the total value?
We'll have to have you come up here, Aaron. Oh, I think they can manage.
Thank you, Mark. That's a very good question. So there's a couple of things that you look at with the establishment and the adoption of an I F T. The application, of course, is very specific in regards to what the costs are for the applicant. Those are their specific costs, but that does not reflect ultimately to the value of assessed or taxable value that will be abated or placed off of the ad valorem roll onto the special act roll. So cost and value are a little bit different. Their costs don't always equal value, and that's pretty typical with an application. Now, in this particular circumstance, and I've had the opportunity to visit this building prior to construction, this is a total transformation of a building, which is a little bit different than what we've seen before. But in addition to the 7,000 square foot that's going to be added on to the building, it's ultimately essentially changing the building from what's essentially a warehouse into a laboratory. That in itself actually is, in assessor speak, reclassifying the building in regards to a completely different occupancy and use, which ultimately increases the value of the building. And it would be that amount of value in addition to the additional square footage that would be abated under the certificate, which is for your consideration this evening. I thought that's how it worked.
Sorry, I'm not sure I understood the answer. That is it the incremental value or the total value?
The incremental value.
The incremental value.
Long answer for a very short
No, I got, no, I appreciate it. So
I was trying to help it.
So going forward, then, they would have, if this was approved, they would get an ad valorem personal property tax, an ad valorem real tax, and then an I F T, an I F T personal and an I F T real. So they would get four tax bills.
Well, let's talk about the real property itself.
Okay.
I F Ts never cover land, so they're always going to have a land, I mean, so there's always that particular case. But in this particular case, they would probably have two bills. One would be the I F T portion, or what would be the actual value added due to the renovation and additional square footage. And then the other, which would be the ad valorem, which would be the original building and land value that would be on there. So they essentially would have two bills, there are two tax bills on, on the real property side. The personal property side, I don't know. I mean, I really don't know whether or not they would have any personal property that would not be eligible for eligible manufacturing personal property. They may be transferring personal property that would be in. But with the understanding that the vast majority of their assets are going to be newly acquired and not transferred into the municipality, the vast majority of those would be exempt under the E M P P anyways. I'm very much owed to the assumption that they would qualify under E M P P. So the vast majority of the personal property, we may not have any personal property tax liability, which is very common.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a couple. One, you mentioned, hold on, turn this on.
You mentioned you have manufacturing in northern Michigan. Where is that?
It's actually just outside of Traverse City.
Okay. So it's in Grand Traverse County?
Nice.
Yes.
Okay. Second is, what manufacturing, if any, will you do in the Plymouth building? And don't consider prototypes manufacturing?
Oh, no. The final assembly of the actual product and manufacturing happens in the Plymouth building. So we, right now, in our building in Ann Arbor, if you came in and visited, it's true assembly. Our products have to be made, assembled, and most of our parts are produced here in Michigan, and assembled here in Michigan. So the space that we're utilizing in Plymouth is actually just an overflow space, because we've been extremely busy, and we're adding an additional line. But we're running four lines here. That's an additional line to help service excess capacity right now.
Okay. Where can hunters or sportsmen buy your product? And what is the brand name that it's sold under?
It's actually sold under Eotech, and it can be bought anywhere from Amazon to Cabela's to pretty much any hunting, sporting's good. It's a very well-known brand within the industry.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Are we going to have to reduce it to 10 years because of the lease?
Yes. It's in the, that's right in the cover memo here.
I was just going to ask, although we do have a lease for 10 years, there is an option to renew. And because we're the common ownership of the building and the tenant, or I could amend the lease for that matter, I mean, we're the same company, if that makes it easier to extend it, it's
Or you can come back after 10 years.
Come back and ask for the other two years.
Right.
I think that might be the better route.
That's fine.
Okay. Any, John?
Yeah, just a comment to you. Our very competent supervisor here has done a good job in welcoming you. And I want, I haven't heard that word. job in welcoming you. And I want, I haven't heard that word yet. I want to welcome you to the community. I've lived here 36 years in the same house. And anyway, please, two names. There is an economic development community luncheon now scheduled for October 14th. I would like you to be there. I would like you to attend because we're kind of shining a spotlight on the economic development that's going on here. And that could be post-pandemic. So the wonderful answer about we're making things and manufacturing things right here in Plymouth Township. I'm thrilled with that answer. I'm, I'm a lawyer, 42 years in Wayne County. I go to court. I stand in front of a judge. So I have to deal in reality. And the question from trustee Monahan about the reality of 150 jobs is really the heart and soul here because the job is the linchpin of our economy. But welcome to the community. Now, the two names are Wes Graff, the head of our Plymouth Chamber of Commerce. And secondly, our economic development director, our coordinator, Wes Graff, Plymouth Chamber of Commerce. I beg you to join and become a member counselor. I will sponsor you. And secondly, Gary Heitman, who has his finger on the pulse of economic development and is on the job, you know, I, I get an email from him. He'll be speaking to the board here in a couple of months. This supervisor is well aware of our history. I am not Methuselah, but I was on the board here in 1988 to 1992. And the policy was to grant such abatements, to grant such exemptions. I'm willing to offer that resolution or the proposed motion.
Let we, hold on. We are, we are on our way there. So just keep that thought in mind.
Okay. Welcome.
Are there any other comments from the applicants at all? Anybody in the public would have any questions at this time, limited to three minutes? Okay. I did get a text message from a resident who is watching us on TV and she just wanted to know that the microphones are working so well that she can hear paper rustling, crickets, bugs, everything. So you may want to just turn it off. So that's just the red button. So that's the red button. Just press it. I would just turn it off so that we're not picking up all of that other background noise. Again, this is a new system. We appreciate the feedback in real time from, from residents who are watching us. So thank you for watching us. Okay. Hearing no other questions or comments from the board, Mr. Stewart has a motion.
I move to approve resolution number 2021-04-27-27, approving a 10-year industrial facilities exemption certificate to E O Tech LLC for the existing building improvements located at 46900 Port Street as requested.
Motion's made by trustee Stewart, seconded by trustee Kermy. Mr. Clark, please take the roll.
Before you roll call, may I ask one thing? And maybe this is appropriate of the assessor. E O Tech being the tenant, but the building and real property being billed to the owner, do we need to add the proper name of the LLC that owns the real?
E O Tech's responsible for the
For the tax through the lease. Okay. Just sorry, just making sure.
Okay. So you have a triple net lease? All right. Okay. You never want to grab victory from the jaws of a bee or something.
Well, Jerry, this, before we go on, we previously had a requirement that they filled out an annual report of how many jobs they have or whatever. Has that requirement gone away?
No, no, it's, it's every two years they have to, to submit to the township how many jobs they have, what type of investments they've made, and any type of benefit they've put forward to the, to the community.
So may I come and see those for our existing abatements? Are they, are they sending them in?
Yes, they are.
Really? Well, there was a time when they weren't. And they just kind of forgot about it.
Well, and, and last year was difficult with the COVID. So.
Well, it's email. Okay. So do you understand what we're talking about with this?
Yes, we do, we do that reporting now and we're quite proud of it.
You're doing that in Ann Arbor?
Not for abatement purposes, but we report our jobs because we're made in America. We serve our military and, and
You have federal contracts.
So we're, we're very highly regulated.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Supervisor Heising.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Monahan.
Yes.
Trustee Stewart.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. We'll offer a discount to your local police department if they need any E O Tech products as well. So let us know, chief, if you want to reach out.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Next up is item three. This is the golf cart sale lease program. Treasurer Clinton.
Thank you. Bob, if you wouldn't mind pulling up that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get there. Sorry.
No worries. So as you may be aware, in the, the golf course is doing real well over the last couple of years, this new management team. One of the things that they have identified as a kind of a weak spot is the age of the fleet of the golf carts that we sent to them. In the spring of 2011, the township acquired 55 gas-powered golf carts at a price of $3,900 per cart. If you look and Google it, they'll say that the average lifespan of a golf cart is anywhere between five and seven years, depending on how many rounds you're getting per day, per year out of those golf carts. We've had these for 10 years. They've pretty much exceeded their useful life. And we're starting to get a lot of repairs. We're starting to get a lot of downtime. As a result, you know, we've been working with the management team at Hilltop to see what we can do to address this problem of the fleet. And they looked and they looked and given COVID and given the condition of the golf industry right now, it was really tough to find any proposals that were worth looking at. We've got what is, in my opinion, an extremely good proposal for the replacement of this fleet. They are willing to take back our 55 carts for an amount of $2,050 per cart. And then they offered us proposal for either the purchase or operating lease of 75 carts. We need 75 carts as opposed to the 55 that we previously purchased. And so my recommendation, and we can discuss if you'd like, would that be we execute on an operating lease to lease 75 carts per year from the manufacturer, trade in our 55, and it would come to a total of $23,000 per year for the lease of these 75 carts. In my opinion, this is an outstanding opportunity.
And an operating lease, you don't, you don't transfer title, right?
So the three final, true. So the three options that they've given us are number one, buy them outright. Number two, basically rent to own. So we would make payments for five years. And at the end of the five years, we would owe them a balloon payment. Or the third option is an operating lease, which again is $23,000. We can talk about the pros and cons of leasing versus owning if you want. Me personally, I don't want to be in the golf cart owning business. And for $23,000 a year to lease these carts, to me, that's the, that's the best route to take.
Do we have to have those insured?
Not that I'm aware of.
So I think our lease, our, our contract with, with the golf course management company has insurance provisions in there that, that we can double check and see if they apply to the carts as they exist right now. We may have to, and I'm looking to Kevin, but we may have to amend that contract at some point because that was not foreseen when we executed the contract with AMV.
That's a good point because we're renting something and we may end up, if they get stolen or damaged, we have to pay for something that we don't own essentially.
Right.
And our insurance company might have to weigh in on normally paying for something you don't own.
Yeah. And AMV, they, they are carrying insurance currently, but how that, we still own the carts. So there's going to be some modification, some dispute maybe between the two, if, in the event that there was litigation. So we can check that out. Kevin can check that out. All right. Any questions else from the board?
So the old plan where we, well, the last golf carts where we actually borrowed the money.
Yeah.
Bond, we bonded part of a $1.9 million bond. That has paid off now?
Yes.
It is. And borrowing from our water department is not a good alternative. Or maybe it wasn't considered or because in the past, sometimes that was done. This would be like a $300,000 purchase, I think, right?
A net, I think it would be roughly 200. And I don't know if you can page down a little bit, Bob. I think it was 230,000 to buy the carts.
Yeah, after the sale of the equipment.
Yeah, it's option, financing option number one. One more page down.
It's 232,000.
So it would cost us, if we wanted to buy it outright, it would cost us $232,000.
And then we'd have to, if we borrowed that from the water fund, we'd have to transfer that to this company Midwest, right?
We'd have to, we'd have to give them a check for $232,000. We'd have to pay the Water and Sewer Fund a respectable interest rate.
Which is what, 2%?
That's what we're doing for, for like the, the other assets we've borrowed against them. But that's basically what we're paying these folks anyhow. So whether we're leasing from them or borrowing from our own water and sewer is pretty much a wash. And again,
Although we get the profit. I mean, we get the interest that goes into the
Yeah. I mean, it's the water.
So they said their interest rate's about 2%?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah. And a question, just, I think I already know the answer to this, but why gas over electric?
They don't have the ability, they don't have the equipment to charge the electric carts. That would be a significant capital investment to charge the carts.
You'd have to put in 75 charging stations.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
So that's the answer to the question regarding the text message I just got. What about electric golf carts? Okay.
It is. Yeah.
Okay. I regard Treasurer Clinton's opinion and recommendation with the highest degree of credibility and would be glad to offer the resolution.
Please do. If, if there's no other questions from the audience at all. Okay, go ahead.
I move to approve resolution number 2021-04-27-28 to trade in the township's current fleet of golf carts and replace them through a five-year operating lease agreement with Midwest Golf and Turf for 75 carts and to authorize the finance director to appropriate $23,000 of general fund balance to the Parks and Recreation Department, 101-691-940000, leased equipment account.
Motion's made by trustee Stewart, seconded by trustee Monahan. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Stewart?
Yes.
Trustee Monahan.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Supervisor Heising.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next item is item four, formal establishment of what I'm currently calling Gulfview Park. Unless somebody's got a better idea, but the most important thing about this item is that we would take the necessary steps to authorize the township attorney to draft, prepare and file any legal documentation needed to effectuate this designation. Currently, the triangle area bounded by Beck, Powell and Ann Arbor Trail is still legally part of the golf course property. And so in order to designate this formally as a park, we would have to file the necessary paperwork with the county, the register of deeds and provide an accurate legal description, which I, I believe I have because we've had this property assessed before. We've had this appraised before recently. So maybe Kevin and I can get you that information. I, I don't want to get hung up on the name right now. I know trustee Dempsey has expressed, a former trustee Dempsey had, had expressed a desire to have a, maybe a citizens contest or, or participation in the naming. But, you know, I, we can, we can worry about that later. The most important thing is that we would, we would formally designate it as a park. Why is that necessary? Because in many respects, like grants, applying for grants, every time we get grants from Wayne County Parks, or if we apply to a, a state or federal agency, they, they literally want and deserve a legal description of, of what we're talking about. What's the, what's the site that you, that you intend to improve or seek funding for? This does not mean that we are going to magically spend money overnight to put in paths or benches or tables or trees or statues or anything like that. But we, we want to be ready. We, I'd like this to be more of a shovel-ready project in the event we are able to spend federal money later this year, whether that is part of the COVID relief money or whether that is part of a future federal infrastructure grant program or appropriation to, to cities, villages and townships. Where we stand right now is I really, I, I was planning on putting this before the board later this year, once we had a better idea about what federal funding might look like. But since we are, this, this dog issue keeps coming to the forefront, I wanted to at least get this established so that in the event, we want to create a pilot dog-friendly park, that we would have the ability to do that using this, using this parcel. Otherwise, other than for the two new board members, this, this is something that we've talked about in the past. I don't think there's any surprises here. I think the timing might be the only surprise from the standpoint that I've accelerated this request by maybe two months at the most. So I'll entertain any questions you may have.
I was just going to say that I think it's the right time to do this because our, our citizens need to have more, we need more time outside. We've been cooped up for way too long. And I think this also helps us that if we do get the funds, we're actually going to be ready to make a decision on, you know, improvements on the property. There's already those beautiful trees. They're blooming. If anyone's seen them, I did today. They're beautiful. And, you know, we've talked about the watering of them and taking care of them. So that's all being done. So it's really exciting. I think probably by fall or whatever, if we can get our money, maybe we have something greater to look forward to in that park. So I would move to adopt.
Well, let's, let's have
Let's have some discussion.
Yeah, let's have some continued discussion. But any other questions, comments from the board?
I have a few.
Yeah.
Dogs are already allowed on this piece of property. It's a free range piece of land. So we're not going to help out dogs in this case. And when I, when you hear the word neighborhood, I think of Miller Park where we have absolutely no parking. In fact, no parking signs on both sides of the road. It's like literally a neighborhood park, only the people who live in Robinson Sub get to use it or somebody can ride a bike. Are we going to do that here? And are we going to have township park employees over managing it? Right now it's free range. So I'm concerned about that. Plus, don't we have a lot of parks to take care of now? Already, I mean, we, we're having a tough time with what we got.
So let me just try to hit as many of those as, as possible. First of all, we did the joint management, the joint recreation plan with the city a couple of years ago. Connectivity, walking, jogging, biking was seen as one of the top priorities for both communities. We are investing substantially this year in sidewalk gap projects to allow people to easier and safely access the, both the township and the city along our, our major roads. And that's a project that I would like to see continue. When I, when I first proposed this, this concept last year, I talked about it as a passive park, meaning that there will be no activities. There is no baseball, softball, playground equipment, anything like that. It's, it's a green space. I anticipate that at some point, there will be a path or paths that will go across it, picnic tables, maybe some park benches. It's a destination. It's a destination for people who are, who are either walking, biking, possibly walking their dog, but walking, biking through the community. It's not where, where you're going to say, I, I want to deliberately go, get in my car and go to that park. It's anticipated that this will be used more heavily by walkers, bikers and joggers who just see this as a, as a destination or a waypoint along a much, a much larger walk or jog or biking experience. Plus, there's a large wooded area there too, which is to the east of the site. It's very, it's in really rough shape right now. If, if we had the money, it'd be great to clean that area up, get rid of all the dead trees and branches in there and pot, and more than likely put some kind of a wooded, small, very small wooded pathway through there as well, similar to what we have on the north side of the park. The park, this, this park itself is currently being maintained by the golf course. They mow it and we are taking care of the trees, but the golf course is mowing it. I, I'm pretty sure that given the very positive relationship that we have with the golf course, they're not going to have a problem maintaining it, at least in the short term. But it is something that we may have to look at maintaining more in the future. I think our staff does a great job at the golf, at the park right now, maintaining things. We, we don't have the staff that we did a few years ago, but I think that they do a very good job, given the limited very good job given the, uh, limited resources that they have. So I don't think, as far as maintenance goes, I think we can continue to work with the golf course on that. Um, it's, it's kind of a, right now it's kind of a gift that they're providing to us. And I, I'm sure that if they want to maintain the great relationship that we have, I'm sure that they'll continue to, uh, to provide us that service or at least assist us when we, when we need it.
The east end of that piece of property, there's hundreds of yards of fill dirt that the township dumped in there in the 90s.
Yeah.
That'll eventually have to get leveled off if you're going to proceed. But that's where you have those mounds.
Yeah.
I think that fill came from the township park. I, I don't remember somewhere.
Yeah.
Uh, but my concern is that it'll be over-regulated. I, I need to have a commitment that we're not going to have, uh, too much, uh, too many rules, uh, too much interference with people trying to do something there and...
Well, again, it's, the nature of a passive park is that it's really just, uh, it's, it's going to be more like Miller Park without the, the place structure in the middle of it. Um, and that's what you've got there right now.
You're scaring me. Miller Park, you can't park, you're not, there's no parking signs on both sides of the street.
But again, it's not a destinat- it's not a, it's not a park where you're going to be driving your car to and, and walking around. It's...
Then what's, what's the point of it then?
It's to connect our existing limited green areas, uh, especially as part of our, I would hope to be our broader connectivity plan for recreation, uh, which would be, number one, would be the, um, filling of the sidewalk gaps and connecting the, the main roads north, uh, both north and south to the city and, uh, and other places.
Well Kurt, it has a sidewalk on the east side and on the...
Yeah, but...
On the, on the, this whole, this whole, it has a sidewalk on two sides. Well, no.
No, one side.
One side.
And what's, what's going to be ultimately be the investment in order to realize the full plan?
I think, I, I think the McKenna folks did a, a, enough of a study where we have some financial, um, estimates on what things would cost. Uh, i- if, if this federal money can be used for infrastructure, my top, my personal top priority is to use it for sidewalk gap construction. We've had Jeremy and the engineering staff put together a very detailed, uh, estimates on what it's going to cost to do the sidewalk gaps on all the major roads. Um, it's about 750 to 800,000 dollars. If we get to, if we're allowed to spend the 2.7 million the way we want, then we certainly have enough money for that and we would have enough money to make improvements here. It's not probably, you're not going to see anything grandiose this year. Um, I, I think you're going to see maybe a park bench, maybe, um, you know, ma- maybe something else, but I don't know what that would look like right now. It, it's, it's really to start laying the groundwork for future, um, future investment in that site.
Well, and the other consideration is, is that the golf course, God forbid, was ever sold, that piece of property goes with that sale of the golf course. It, we have an opportunity to seize the land for our own citizens that cannot ever be sold. Right?
Audrey, we can, when you sell land, you can split it off.
Of course you can.
That was the proposal three years ago, was to sell this triangle.
Yeah, but you know what? Here's the thing. We have a bird in hand, right? We've got something that we tangible. We don't have to wait for it to be passively sold, okay? And then hopefully someone will be nice enough to, you know, annex that land for our purposes. I, I don't think that's wise.
Kevin, can I ask?
What's this park? Sorry, go ahead.
I was going to ask Kevin a question from a legal perspective. I mean, right now, this is township-owned land. It's laying idle, but it's being maintained. What, what is the difference from a legal perspective whether this is idle township-owned land versus something that's designated as a park?
Okay, under, um, Act 157 of 1905, which is called the Township Parks and Places of Recreation Act and is incorporated into general township law, parks, uh, allow the, parks have a board of commissioners. Parks are allowed to create rules for use of the property. There's different means for financing, um, parks, subject to voter approval. If a, if property is designated a park, um, then the, again, subject to voter approval, maintenance of the park can be done by an increase in mills or by issuance of bonds. Again, both, both of those require voter approval. Um, township can condemn private land to create pub, to create a park. Uh, under this law, appropriations from the budget can be used for acquisition, support, maintenance and upkeep and improvement of the park. And as Supervisor Heisey indicated earlier, under county ordinance and federal law, uh, parks are eligible for certain grants that other, other public property is not eligible for.
You don't want to leave... Once it's parked, can it be unparked?
Yes, I would say it can be.
I would say as long as the township owns it, yes, absolutely.
Well, if you spent federal money on it, you might not be able to. It might be a one-way street.
Oh, that wasn't the triangle. That was that building.
The township is allowed to sell park property, um...
I don't know, just...
With board authorization.
Little over a year ago, we said we didn't want to do this right away, but what's changed?
Well, I, and I, I did as well. And, and I appreciate, you know, the differing viewpoints on this. My opinion has not changed in that, A, we, we have a park 200 yards down the street from this. B, once we turn it into a park, I think it's going to be very difficult, as you've mentioned Bob, to unpark it. Um, and, and then we lose the flexibility of any other option that we might have with this land. And then C, I'm just still concerned about the maintenance of this if we keep. And, and you could see people's expectations when we said this was going to be a park. They immediately jumped to park benches, shelters, walking trails, biking trails. I don't think we're in even close to a position within the township that we can afford to invest or maintain those types of, of, uh, services within the park. So I'm, my, really my opinion hasn't changed since last year. I would, I think, I don't think I would support this. I'd like to keep it as it is, uh, with just vacant township-owned land.
Free range, right? Free range park or piece of property where you can just kind of go and hang out. Walk your dog.
Okay.
Mr. Supervisor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, uh, I spoke with Jack Dempsey for about a half an hour at lunchtime today. And we reviewed what, about the vote over a year ago in the discussion about this park. I want to support and commend the supervisor and Jack Dempsey for what I view as a purely motivated passive park and to inform you that a bench has already been donated as a memorial to someone to sit there. Jack indicated to me that this was minimal maintenance and would be a very peaceful green space and he would like to see this passed. So I'm willing to offer a motion. Yes or no?
We can, we can get to that point. Any questions or comments from the audience or from the board at this time? You got to come up, state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes.
I'm Dwayne Zantop. I'm, I'm concerned if, uh, we're going to make this into a dog park. There's no place to park over there. And obviously I'm kind of handicapped. I couldn't even, I don't know how I'd get, get over there to be honest with you. Just, I think that's part of the plan to make it a dog park. And, uh, there's, there's really no parking. I don't know where we'd park. So this is something you need to, to consider if that's what we're going to do with it.
I don't, I don't think it's to make it a dog park, but, but it was rather to permit dogs to be there.
The next, the next...
They're already permitted.
The next agenda item would be to make it a pilot project, which is what the board, uh, I don't want to get into that right now, but the next agenda item would make it a, uh, a pilot project, dog-friendly, uh, park. We would provide the, the necessary, the dog mitts and the trash cans and things like that pursuant to the rules that we would be adopting, um, later this evening.
Well...
If that's your pleasure.
I'm, I still want to finish. But there's no way I could walk over there and, and you gotta, you can't park a car, but there's no parking. So that's something you got to consider.
Well, you, you just raised a good point.
There's no walking pass there. I don't know if it had, it would have to be ADA compliant or not. But that's something...
Well, there we are. Maybe we need some legal on this. If it's ADA, if it's a park, are we required by law to make it ADA compliant?
No paths. There's nothing there.
Well, we're going to build, we're going to build a path and we're going to put a bench. We're going to build a path and put a bench in.
The path's already there. There's a path right there right now.
There is?
There'll be more. There's a sidewalk and the bench will be...
There's a sidewalk, but there's, I'm talking about interior paths have been laid out, but they haven't been installed yet.
Yeah, that's going to happen. If that happens, yeah, you have to make it ADA compatible, just like we do everywhere else in the, in the other, in the township.
All right. So then we get into a whole development project. All right.
Well, well...
I understand.
That's what happens.
Well, Rome wasn't built today.
Okay. Uh, next.
Hi, Chris Hunter. Uh, very quickly, I, I think you're kind of putting the cart before the horse here. Having a park would be beautiful. The only thing that would make it more beautiful is making it so it couldn't be sold for development, uh, because I know that was one of the...
Yes.
One of these long arguments we had last year. There was discussion, it was part of the, uh, the golf course committee actually talked about that as well. So, having grass with nothing would still be beautiful. Just designating this area as a park, I think is a first step. And then we can figure out, you know, where we're going with it. With all due respect to, uh, Mr. Zantop, the, the beautiful part of this is we have township park right there. No dogs are allowed in township park. And frankly, that rule has been violated immeasurably. Uh, I'd love to say it's regulated. It's just not. I don't know if it has become a problem or not, but this, this provides you a nice solution to that where maybe it's a little more difficult for people to not take care of their animals in public view. Uh, and they'd be encouraged to take care of their dogs if they were using this area and walking their, their pets through the area. It's a lot more challenging with township park. People are routinely bringing their dogs through. There's very little supervision. Uh, and frankly, I've been with residents walking through there who have, who have kindly said, you know, dogs aren't allowed in the park. And the response has been very unfriendly, which is surprising for the community. So what I would encourage the board to do is, I, start with step one. I mean, Jack has the right idea. Designate it as a park. Lock in your commitment to not sell this property or set it up for development. And then take your time and figure out what to do with it. Making it dog-friendly, that's beautiful because you, you've solved two problems now. The issue of dogs in township park. Now they have somewhere to go and clean up their mess and we don't have to worry about children stepping in, in pieces. So I'm probably over my time, but that's my two cents worth and, and thank you because this has been a long time coming.
Right, right. My, my friend, would you kindly please put your appearance and acknowledge that you are a practicing attorney?
If I have to, sure, no, I'm not.
Yes, please, your name.
By all means, Chris Hunter. Yes, I'm a resident of the township. And full disclosure, I am a lawyer. Don't hold it against me. Uh, and I guess I...
But one, one quick question.
Sure.
You do accept and would be in agreement with a laser-focused, proposed motion to allow this attorney, our township attorney, to draft, prepare and file proper legal documentation?
I'd be all in favor for it.
Okay.
You know, I'm, I am sort of biased because I'm first with that part.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hunter. Good to see you again.
Thank you, um...
Okay, let's move on to further public comment.
Wait till he gets up there so we can hear you. Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Tom Heathfield. I'm not an attorney. I'm an engineer. Um, I actually live directly across the street from the park. A red house, uh, I can't quite point to it, but it's right under Ann Arbor Trail there. I work from my home office and my office is in the front of the house. I monitor the park daily.
Where do you live? I'm, I got a pointer.
Force, that one right there.
Okay.
So I, I sit in the front left corner there and I can see the whole park from my office window.
Well, that's fine.
I have two corgis. We walk across the street. We go down the sidewalk up to the edge of McCulpa Park. We walk in front of the fronts and go to the little creek and we turn around at lunch each day. Um, I find it a little offensive that my wife and I walk in the evening. We have to leave the dogs home because we make a loop around the park and it's against the law to bring the dogs into the park. So not so cool about that. Um, just another side comment. If you could scroll back to right in front of the golf course, um, you guys planted a bunch of trees last fall and you planted them right underneath the power lines that lead to the golf course. You know, in about two years, they're going to have to either move the power lines or cut down the trees.
That's on the Beck Road side or which side is that?
It's directly in front of the golf course, adjacent to the parking lot. The power line goes, um, straight over the road and there's three trees parked directly under the power lines. Very bad choice.
We pay people hundreds of dollars an hour to do that planting.
I, I talked to the guys when they were putting in the trees and asked them.
If we put trees down where, where power lines are, we wouldn't have any trees in the township. Okay? I'm just telling.
Well, no, but his point is if they grow up within 40 years...
And they can be trimmed too.
That they're destroyed then?
No, they're not.
Yes, they are.
No, they're not.
It was a bad choice to put the three trees. Drive by, please look at it.
Okay. I'm just telling you, trees can be trimmed. They're not going to die.
Yeah. Okay. First point, the golf course loves to use the park as a dump. They throw trees and garbage and stuff off into the, you know, the east end of the park.
Sorry, by the park, you mean the triangle.
The triangle, yeah. The triangle gets used as a dumping area by the golf course. When I see them out there, I go out and talk to them.
In this, in this area here? See my pointer?
Yeah, the far left edge of the trees, the other, other direction, other left, right, right in that area, a lot of stuff gets dumped.
That's where the fill dirt is.
There's fill dirt back in the trees and a bit of concrete and nasty stuff. I've, I've been back in there. Um, so...
I was just back there Saturday.
Yeah. Uh, the free range area like it is today, people come there every day with the dogs. They're throwing the ball and the Labrador Retriever gets it. And people are really, they enjoy the space. You know, people go out and just sit down in the middle of the field and just enjoy the sunshine. So I'd, I'd really like to be able to keep the, the present atmosphere of it. Um, the one thing I have requested to the park service several times is that at McCumpla Park, they put a trash can right at the entrance, you know, so that when I walk my dogs, I can drop the poopy bags in the trash. They did for about a year and then they took them away. And I've called several times and asked if that be done. But, you know, if we are going to make it a dog area, putting a trash can in is a great idea. That's all I have unless any of you have a question for me.
If, if that triangle area is designated as a dog-friendly park, uh, it, it would be our intention to purchase trash cans and mutt mitts, uh, make, and make them available.
Yeah.
And again, we're, the, the, the Board of Trustees back in January had said that one of our goals, which is considered a high priority, is to, um, initiate a pilot project, pilot project for a dog-friendly area in township park. Now, this is...
Township park.
Okay, you got me Chuck.
Yeah.
So it's not township park, but it's, it accomplishes, it accomplishes all of the other, uh, attributes. And if we designate this as a park tonight, then that makes it far easier for us to enforce the rules.
And, and as long as we don't restrict dogs from it. And the, the other thing, you know, also if you get down to the park, I'm a dog owner. If I walk up the sidewalk, the sidewalk goes into the park.
Right.
So I can't legally go up the sidewalk unless, you know, I, up, up towards town unless I take the sidewalk through the park. I really don't want to walk on the road. Um, that would be, you know, we need to be able to pass through different areas, you know, with your dog and not fear of the police giving you a ticket for having your dog in the park when you're just on the sidewalk.
Well, we're working on where the McClumpa dead ends into...
Yep.
Um, McClumpa Road dead ends into Ann Arbor Trail. We're trying to figure out longer term how we would put a sidewalk there between the gate and the creek. So, but it'll take some engineering work.
Yeah.
Because right now it, it goes inside, like you said, because it's a lot easier to cross the creek.
Sure.
That's why it was installed that way years ago.
Yeah, but, you know, we should be able to traverse that area without fear of, uh, being cited for walking your dog in the park.
Well, you're, uh, we know that you're a responsible dog owner and that's, we wish, not everybody is unfortunately, especially with attractive nuisances like the spray scape and picnic pavilions and, uh...
I see the evidence every day when I walk.
Yeah. Oh, that's what we're worried about. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Brent? So Brent, tell us who you are and, uh, who do you work for?
Brent McMullin. I'm the park foreman. Work for the township. Um, I'm all for this.
I'm all for this idea to solve your dog issue.
How so?
Well, we're taking account for what everybody said here today, ADA compliant, whatever. I've read the emails. I've been on all of them. The whole ADA thing, if you go to Livonia, you go to Farmington, their dog parks are dog parks. They're fenced in field with some waste receptacles. That's it.
I beg to differ with you. They have 66 parks in Livonia, and dogs are allowed in every park.
Well, they're not.
According to their website, it is.
I live in Livonia. You pay a fee for Centennial Park.
But you can walk your dog.
You can't walk it. He says it. To and from park.
Okay, the city of Plymouth has dogs in every park also.
But.
Yeah.
But I, but I'm.
This is a ruse.
I'm not connecting.
There are also that you're not having dogs around screening kids.
But I'm not.
We have a hard time with responsible adults picking up their own trash in the park.
But let me ask the question if I may, because I'm just, I'm not connecting how, right now, it's property, it's free-range property that people could take their dogs on, right? But they're still going into the park right now. And what your argument is, is that by designating it as a park and saying you can take dogs there, it's gonna solve the dog problem on the Township Park, and I.
We don't have as many dogs.
Not that I'm against it. I just don't believe that's true. I don't think that's gonna be true.
We don't have as many dogs as you guys think. We do come into the park daily. Maybe once a week. In the summertime, it's a little more, maybe. A couple here and there.
Then how come a park foreman wrote an email saying, "I hope that we do this because I can enforce it now, and it would make it easier to allow dogs, and I wouldn't have to harass people." I have an email that came, you guys all got it, said that several weeks ago. So it must be more than once a week if it's creating that much hassle for whoever the park foreman.
Year-round.
I think the idea is, is that, of course, you would advertise that they could take their dogs there. So right now, maybe other people don't know that they could take their dogs there.
Where?
If, to the triangle part. So if you have a sign saying if you want to walk your dog in a park area, you can go over here. And so that's part of the education of the public for using park facilities. And so it's just common sense.
But somebody's gonna have to, somebody from the park staff is gonna have to go over there, and occasionally, they're gonna have to pick up waste that's left behind. Somebody's gonna have to do it. I ain't doing it.
We don't have to. Let me just make it clear. These are two separate agenda items.
I get it.
We don't have to adopt any dog rules for the triangle park.
I get it, but people are connecting these two things together.
Trying to break them apart again. So just, anyway.
I'm willing, because it's already got brought up as dogs. I was waiting for the dog issue to come up.
Okay, just, you're good.
Thank you.
So this is premature. You're gonna come back.
Probably. He may, I know. All right. Any other questions or comments from the audience or from the board?
Sorry, yeah, go ahead.
Well, no, okay, no, you've had, no, you've had your time. You've had your time. I'm serious.
You can do three minutes at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, okay. I'm running, I run the meeting. So you have three minutes at the end of the meeting. You've had your time. We gave you way more than four minutes. Okay, anybody else? Yep.
My name's Civil Hunter. We live just a short distance from that area, the triangle area, as currently is, is used. I know there was a concern that there's no parking, but it's mostly used by, as Supervisor Heisey said, neighborhood park. It's neighborhood people who walk there. People who are across the street from us, people from our neighborhood, the neighborhood across the street from that area, and the way it currently sits is how it's being used and how it's greatly appreciated. And the fact, one of the concerns about pickup, which dog poo is a big thing, and people aren't necessarily respectful. We are. Some of our neighbors are. I know not everybody is. But if it's designated in a park, dog and that, there is, as our neighbor said, debris over there, things that get dumped there. Once it's designated, somebody's gonna have to clean it up anyway. This is a way to clean it up, preserve it, and to meet a whole bunch of needs for our neighborhood that have been brought up before by different committees. So I guess as a resident, I see it as a very positive thing. If it ends up a dog park, that's good. Or a dog-friendly area, that's good. If it doesn't, that's okay too. It still serves that purpose. If it does end up a dog park, it's a legal place for people to take their animals, to allow more space. If it doesn't, it's still seen as a value for our neighborhood and the surrounding area. Do I see people driving all the way across town to park there and walk there? No. But I don't see that for the other open spaces that are in neighborhoods over by Old Town and various other parts of the township. So we all kind of have our areas, and we all kind of have our niches, and this one, in my humble opinion, looks like a positive thing and a good direction to go, just to make it a park, to protect it, to keep it, to keep it clean and to know it's there, what we do with it in the future, I think, depends on a lot what comes down, what comes down the pike later.
Yeah, exactly.
So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, then I, Mr. Stewart, I think you had mentioned.
Wait, I have some questions. So, so this property becomes a township park as opposed to an extension of the golf course, and that means that the golf course management company would no longer mow the lawn or do any maintenance on it?
No, that's not. I believe that they will continue to do that as long as we ask them to. We have a great relationship with them. We're providing them with other support like money. We're buying them equipment at the golf course, and we're providing them, for example, like with the wood chipper that we've purchased. They're gonna have use of that. So I just see that as part of our joint sharing agreement.
Okay.
Symbiotic relationship.
It did, it did. I'm not sure how it was done, to tell you the truth, but I know that the planting of the trees has complicated mowing that lawn, because the golf course used to be able to take the big mowing machine that they used to cut the fairways and just go up and down that open space. And I noticed when I drove home the other day, they had to carve around the trees, so only they would cut like just the inner side of the open area, and then somebody else must have had to come back with a lawnmower and cut in between the trees and everything. So it's, putting the trees there has complicated the maintenance of that property.
But it's not gonna be incremental work for our township staff.
Not at this, not at this time.
Someday it will.
I don't, I can't say that, but for the time being, I don't see it. Okay, anybody else? Mr. Stewart?
I move to approve Resolution 2021-04-27-29, formally designating the township-owned triangular parcel, bound roughly by Beck Road, Powell Road, and Ann Arbor Trail, as a Plymouth Township Golf View neighborhood park, and authorizing the township attorney to draft, prepare, and file any and all legal documentation needed to effectuate this designation.
Motion's made by trustee Stewart. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Monahan. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Borba, yes. Trustee Terney?
No.
Treasurer Clinton?
No.
Trustee Monahan?
Yes.
Trustee Dorshavitz?
Yeah.
Trustee Stewart?
Yes.
Supervisor Ayew?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Next up is item five. This would be the addendum to the park's rules and regulations pertaining to Golf View Park for the allowance of dogs. Effective May 29th through September 1st, dogs would be walked at the, could be walked at the park. Dogs have to be on a leash, no more than 10 feet in length. They must be on a leash at all times. Dog waste must be retrieved and disposed of by the dog owner. As I pointed out, we will provide mutt mitts and trash cans. Dog walker is responsible for the dog's conduct and behavior. I'm not even sure if that's possible, but I put that in there. I wrote this, so you guys, you can have at it. Dogs must stay clear of other dogs and people unfamiliar to the dog. Again, I did my best to put something together that would try to accomplish some of the things that we have talked about in the past. We just want, this is not a dog park. We are not gonna put up a fence around here and have swipe cards and, you know, Livonia can do a lot because they have a dedicated millage, which is probably in excess of, you know, one and a half mills. So they can do a lot more than we can. And at any rate, it's, it's, the board asked for a pilot study, a pilot program. This would be it, and we'll see how it works. If it doesn't work, if people abuse it, then we'll stop. But this would be the accommodation that I hope that you were looking for.
This is incredible. We're only one minute into approving the park, and already the triangle now is restricted in the dogs between May and September 1st. Right now, it's anytime, year-round. We already got a new rule, just what I said.
It's a temporary policy, and you know it.
Just take it, take off the date. I mean, we want this to be.
So you want this to be permanent?
Well, no. Wait a minute. We just discussed. We're not gonna change the Golf View Park, and now we already got a new rule one minute later.
So the board said initiate pilot project. This is a pilot.
That was Township Park. This piece of property has no current rules, and anyone, like this gentleman said, can walk their dog year-round. This now says, "I can't start walking my dog until May 29th. I gotta wait a month." This is weird.
Gives us a chance to buy the necessary.
We don't need to buy anything right now. Let, just let the people walk their dog in this free-range piece of property.
Okay, so what happens when they bite somebody?
That is, you're an attorney. You know that that's a private matter. It's not the township's responsibility.
I have a question. By us designating it as a park now, are dogs precluded because we designated it as a park, or is that only because we have that designation in the Township Park?
Parks are subject to rules. The township currently has park rules and regulations in place. When this property becomes a park, it will be subject to those rules and regulations.
Do the current rules in the Township Park?
Yes.
So that's why this is addendum A, dogs allowed at Golf View Park. So it specifies that dogs would only be allowed under certain conditions at this park.
I say, don't even put this in there.
So I have heard from a lot of people over the years that, you know, have been in favor of allowing dogs in the park, and I personally have no issue with it. I know that there are some pet owners that are not responsible, but I think if you put out, if you put out the materials and there is a penalty for non-compliance, and there's somebody to enforce it, then I think dogs in a park are, I think it could be made workable. I totally do not believe for a minute that by making this a dog area, suddenly, people that are walking their dogs in the park are gonna stop, and they're gonna come over here into the unpaved area and walk their dogs. I don't believe that for a second. So, but, you know, that aside, I would, there's gotta be some enforcement of these rules. Somebody's gonna have to go over to that area and enforce them, and what is the penalty for non-compliance? Do you get booted, or I think there was a?
Currently, we just boot people out of Township Park, but.
They can come back the next day, or?
Yeah, I mean, we're not, I suppose we could fine them. I suppose, I don't know, Kevin, if there's any civil penalty or misdemeanor or something like that, or if it's a fine. $500 or $100 or something. But I mean, we'd have to prosecute that. It would be.
Yeah, I mean, and so, so if this area becomes a dog-friendly area, and I, somebody, I don't recall who said, "Well, we need to promote that and advertise that and make that known." If that's the case, who's gonna go over to that property every day?
Yeah, it would be our park staff. More work.
That's why I say, don't put this in there for the Golf View. Just leave it. Do nothing. We've got a date. You've made it more restrictive. You've, not only are we not doing something in Township Park, now we just restricted the triangle if we pass this.
But we don't allow dogs at Township Park or any parks.
Right.
But if we don't, if we don't pass this, then people can no longer take their dogs to the triangle because it's now a Township Park, and it's subject to the policies.
That's not true.
That's my understanding. That's what he said.
What he just said.
Are you sure? But this new piece of property, you need to check that. The new piece of property automatically is grandfathered into no dogs in the park?
Policies applied to.
I knew we made a boo-boo. Free range is gone.
Okay, any other questions? Anybody in the audience? You got another three minutes. Okay.
No, wait till you get up there, please.
Wait till you get up. So we can hear you.
I think the park, the city rule, it's Section 7, subsection 7, dogs aren't allowed. So this, you know, it's unclear, May 29th to December 1st. Does that mean they're allowed after September 1st?
No, no.
And before then?
Because pursuant to the request of the board, this would be a pilot project.
Okay, but why do we, why do we need a date? I think the pilot project should say, okay, we'd like to try this for six months, and at the end of six months, we have an evaluation. When's the planned evaluation period here?
I got three months, so six months, three months.
Okay, whatever. But we can't, how are you gonna communicate? People go there every day. They park on the gravel road. Their dog comes out. They throw the ball. The dog has a great time. I see it every day of the week, and, you know.
You can no longer do that until May 29th now if we pass this.
Well, no, I can't do it at all, ever. You know, I see people go there every day throwing the ball for their dogs. They got no place to go as soon as you pass this. And I say, you put an addendum that this is grandfathered in as a dog-friendly area, and Section 7 subsection should not apply. Are you reading Section 7 subsection? Okay, that's all I have to say. I'm not sure why he said, why do you say that? Every one of the parks, it says, "Section 7, subsection 7, dogs aren't allowed in the park." And so as soon as you make this a park, dogs are not allowed permanent, period. And that's my objection. It's great to be a park, but it needs to be a dog-friendly area. But this overrides it because this is a.
Right. That's what the point of this is.
Well, it's from, it's, I guess, to your point, sir, it's, I mean, right now, people are using this area kind of just to throw the frisbee, throw the ball with the dog. Now they won't be able to do that because they'll be forced to have them on a leash and have them under control and that type of thing. So they can, they can poop in the park, but that's basically it.
Eliminate the leash requirement. We have the ability to change whatever you want.
This is more restrictions, more rules. Can't leave anything alone.
I've not seen any problems over there. I've not seen like dog fighting or anything. It's been quite good being self-regulated. Most people have a lot of common sense.
Well, you do, but a lot of people abuse the privilege, unfortunately, and one of the things we're trying to avoid is if we have dogs at the park this summer, at Township Park, there's going to be, it's gonna, it's a recipe for disaster.
I walk up through there almost every night. Maybe there's a baseball game, and some out-of-town parent comes in, bring their dog. They don't know. They don't see the sign. They're not bad people, and they're just sitting watching the game. You don't have dogs running around crazy or anything like that. It should be permitted for somebody to bring their dog and sit and watch their kids play baseball.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Brent, where?
With this, about the dogs there. The other thing is, is when people, we kick, when we say to someone that there's no dogs allowed in the park, they ask us where they could go. Where are they supposed to go? And, you know, people cut through all the time, right there, that, along Ann Arbor Trail. We don't kick them out. We don't stop them and say, "There's no dogs in the park." You know who they are. They're cutting through every day. And if you want to put it effective immediately, I'll put a couple cans over there tomorrow, first thing in the morning. I have no issues with that.
So let's get back to the parks. That's where you're working. It's completely overrun by geese, and the mess of the geese is far greater than dogs. So how are you dealing with the geese feces all over the place?
You're complaining about geese feces? That is an.
I'm not complaining. I'm making a statement. I'm not complaining, I'm making a statement.
I gave you the liberty of speaking, without interrupting you.
Okay, okay. I beg your pardon.
Stop it, knock it off. You're, that's not, that's not respectful at all. I'm sorry.
We are doing what we can with the geese. We have looked into, we have calls in right now. We've been allotted, what, $10,000?
Yes, yes.
For goose removal. It's not as simple as just picking up the phone and calling somebody over. They have to come out, give you an idea. There's actually a timeframe when they can do it.
It's been done several times over the years in that park.
Right, we may have missed this window this year. We're doing what we can. We didn't, you know...
But my point is, is the geese feces is far worse than any occasional missed dog thing. And let's correct Livonia. I'm looking at the website. It says, "Animals must be kept on a leash and under control, and that applies to all 66 parks."
The other thing is, have you, I own dogs. I have two dogs. I love my dogs. In the wintertime, have you had to clean up after dogs? You get a snow in between, another snow in on that, another snow in this. Spring comes, what does it look like?
Well, that's the difference.
Dried up.
That's, okay.
But anyway, whatever.
Okay.
Right, it's, I'm saying, this is, let's try it and see. If it works, then we explore other options. But until then...
This is a more, what's happened is, we've totally backfired. This will make dogs more restricted in Plymouth Township than they are, than they were yesterday, because it has dates on it. And I just returned from a trip. National parks allow dogs. So I don't get it. What is, I don't have an equity interest.
What's the National Park budget? What's Livonia's recreation budget? What is their staff? What's the budget? What is their millage? We have no, we have this guy and another, and like four other part-timers.
And we just added workload by having a Golf View Park.
Well, we should hire more people then. So I hope you're willing to spend more taxpayer dollars, because this is the guy who's gonna have to pick up the poop.
We don't have, it's, we can, we're hiring at $15 an hour right now, and we can't get people.
And he'll have to pick up the poop in the, in the spray scape, too. And the place structures and everything else.
Well, what about giving the park foreman the ability to write a ticket for parking and for dogs?
Can't do that. Kevin, you can't do that.
You can't deputize people? Oh, yeah, you can.
Yeah, you deputize the park staff? Come on.
Yeah, you can.
Come on.
What do you think the city of Plymouth does with the guy who's the parking meter person?
I thought they fired him, didn't they? Okay, we're getting way off track. We're talking about geese and Livonia and everything.
We're talking about mess and workload. And Livonia is a competitive community that's neighboring us, that you use as a benchmark. They have more experience than we do.
I don't.
Well, they have more experience in parks.
I don't use them as a benchmark. Their taxes are substantially higher than ours. You can move in there. You're Mr. Low Tax, so...
Well, their valuations are a lot lower, so, anyway.
So Kurt, as I, as I see it, your addendum for the effective date of May 29th through September 1, the purpose is for us to limit the time so we can do the study and see how it's working. Is that what it is?
Pretty much.
Okay, so if we want to put the effective date April 28th or April 27th through September 1, would that be a problem?
Right, is that a problem? Can you get mutt mits and, at least trashcans?
Well, the critical path is not trashcans, because it's already being used for dogs. But...
But you can do that, right? Okay, so actually, it's an improvement in my eyes, because if the dog's already running there, doing their thing, and there's no cans, they're just doing whatever. So at least we have some, you know, we have some receptacle there for people to use. I think that's more responsible, anyway.
So you're gonna need a lot of them, because that's a big piece of property.
Okay, so if, if in the park's employees' opinion is, "It's too messy, after September 1, no dogs are gonna be allowed in the Triangle, now Golf View Park, so we'll be more restricted," I don't want to give that power to you. I can assure you that I don't want to, we are elected officials. It is the second most requested thing is to be able to walk your dog in a park in Plymouth Township. Second only to sidewalks.
Can you point that out in the recreation plan? I don't, I didn't see that anywhere.
It's anecdotal also by going door-to-door and talking to people.
I see. I never, I never do that.
You don't use anecdotal information?
No, I never go door-to-door and talk to people.
Yeah, so you, you heard it.
Yeah, right. Okay. Yes, sir?
Again, Chris Hunter, I promise I'll be very brief and respectful. So trustee Monahan, actually, I think you covered what I was going to ask, which is, so between now and September, these dates could always be extended?
Absolutely, they could be extended, or they could, we could bring it back and modify it.
So, and not to belabor the point, I think that's exactly where I was going. So this isn't cut in stone. We're not, we're not creating a rule for all perpetuity. And forgive me for not being a lawyer here, but pilot project sounds exactly like that. It's meant to be a test study, and if you like it, great. And if you don't, great. And if we want to come back and say it's now a problem, we come back and say it's a problem, and it can be changed. So, I guess from my perspective, why are we trying to solve problems that don't exist? Let's, let's try and work with the community here.
Exactly my point, do nothing. Just leave it silent, be silent.
Well, but, you know, to your point, Mr. Kermy, being silent, taking no action can be just as bad as taking action. At least by taking action, you're showing the community that there's an involvement in this part. There's some decision within the board, and there's discussion going on. And the people listening, I think, are going to hear the discussion. And they'd rather have discussion about this, knowing that there are opportunities, than just have silence with no opportunity. So that's where I disagree with you. So, but that's, that's my piece.
Okay. Assuming there's no one else in the audience, Mr. Stewart, I think you have comments, or no? You're all set?
Then I'll... I just want one more question. I just want to clarify, because trustee Kermy keeps bringing up a singular point about if we leave it alone, people can put dogs there. If we leave it alone, they can't put dogs there. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. Because it's a park now, if we do nothing, people cannot take their dogs there.
Yes.
So you can't leave it alone. You have to do one or the other. That's, I just wanted to be, I wanted clarification on that, and seeing how we've taken this action. For me, I don't want to take away from people the ability to take their dogs there. I mean, I'm not necessarily a fan of, of dogs in parks general, but in this particular instance, because it's already being used, I'm in favor of a pilot program.
All right, anybody else on the board? Then I'll entertain a motion if anybody wants to.
I don't, I don't think in its form, it's serving the purpose. And I'm very disappointed, by the way, the dialogue has just gone in the last 15 minutes. Particularly, we had a park foreman telling a trustee to stop talking.
Okay, I, and that has been, that was duly noted. All right, is there a motion, or not?
I thought you were changing something.
Are we gonna change, addendum?
What are we changing?
Change it to May 1st or something, or give him time to step out there?
Do you like May 1st, Brent?
No, it needs to be tomorrow. Whatever, I'm just giving time to get the stuff out.
So May 1st, May 1st is Saturday. It's Saturday. It's Saturday.
All right, so you can't walk the dog in that park until Saturday.
Okay, nobody's gonna listen. Okay, nobody is listening.
Okay, so is there a motion? I've amended it to May 1st. If not, it'll die, and we'll just proceed. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, because I think it's the right thing to do.
Well, can you read them? I think there's a formal motion language.
It says, "I move that the Board of Trustees approve addendum A, subject to the, well, now, subject to the addendum of the dates, effective date being May 1st. Addendum A to the Township's parks' rules and regulations allowing for dogs at the Township's Golf View Park."
Okay, so the motion's been made by trustee Monahan. Is there a second? All right, I'll second it. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Borba, yes. Trustee Kermy.
No.
Treasurer Clinton.
I'm gonna vote no. And the reason is, I think that this is now putting in more restrictions to dog, and dogs in that space than currently exist. So I vote no.
Trustee Monahan.
And I say yes, because at the end of the day, if we don't do this when it becomes, it's a park, the dogs aren't allowed there, anyway.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
No, for the same reasons Mark highlighted.
When did we start giving...
We're doing it now. I don't know, okay. Mark, you screwed everything up, man.
Trustee, trustee.
We don't even do that in the legislature.
Let me finish.
Trustee's, oh, sorry.
Because, to, to that point, I think the language is too restrictive, and we could have changed this.
Okay. Trustee Stewart.
Yes.
Trustee Heisey.
So it's all up to me, huh?
Lo siento mucho por vosito.
Vote no, and then we'll modify this to...
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Well, I'll vote yes, then.
You authored it.
No, so...
But I gave no vote reason.
So no unleashed dogs going forward.
This is the policy.
No more frisbee.
This is the pilot project until, until September 1st, which is what you all wanted.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
We wanted a pilot program in the Township Park. Come on, that's a...
Ocean Terry's Board of Three.
Take your dog to the Triangle.
You're gonna get a ticket now, sir.
Now you gotta wait till my birthday, May 1 Law Day, this Saturday.
All right, all right, all right. Okay. Item G, public comment, limited to three minutes. Anybody else want to still come up here and talk? Three minutes.
I just want to just apologize for the disruption earlier. What was going on? Somebody was sending me texts, and it went live. It's coming out of this room. I had no idea it was gonna happen. But your podium here, everything is purple on the television screen right now. I don't know why.
What is, what?
But I had no idea it was gonna come live, so...
So somebody at home was telling you it's purple?
This is purple. They sent me a picture, and it was, it came out live. I didn't know it was gonna outlive, so I...
You can't see our ugly faces, it's just purple?
You can see them, but it's all, this thing is all purple.
Well, Jerry installed new lighting, I guess, huh?
You look better under purple light.
All right, well, thank you for that. Anybody else? All right, board comments. I will start. So we have a very busy month of May ahead of us. I just want to give you a heads up on that. We're not going to have a study session on May 5th, but we're gonna have a very involved meeting on May 11th. We're gonna have the approval of the master plan. This is gonna be the Laura Haun night, I can tell you. Approval of the master plan. We have the Purcell House property, cluster housing option. The Margate housing, cluster housing option. Budget amendments from Finance Director Moriarty. We may have the bulletproof glass issue, chief, on that day. And then maybe a discussion about a zoning text amendment that is being requested by the zoning board. So very busy night, plan ahead. Try to get your questions answered ahead of time as much as possible. Laura will certainly be available for anything that you may have on that. On May 25th, we are looking to have our regular meeting, but it will be involving, you're gonna love this, the tree ordinance. I'd like to adopt a tree ordinance that is similar to the one in Plymouth City. And that would allow us down the road to be designated as a tree city, because we are already doing all of the, meeting all of the requirements of a tree city, except for a more comprehensive ordinance.
So what do you mean by that, by a tree ordinance?
Will it restrict cutting of trees on private property?
It will, it will have the effect of either, you will either have to replace, replace the trees in a comparable fashion, or you will have to donate to the tree fund. We already have a tree fund, but this would formally create the tree fund.
That was, that's only for new developments, not my backyard?
No, not your, not your backyard, unless you were doing some kind of major improvements.
Okay, so developments, not...
But don't quote me on that one yet, okay?
We need to be sure.
We will, and we have, we have plenty of time to discuss that, so. So that'll be the month of May, and that will be, that'll be a very busy agenda. And I know Chuck, you've got a couple of things, too, and we are definitely, I'm definitely working on that. And I want to get that out in the month of May, because I know there's a time issue involved. So I will absolutely honor your, your request on that one. So, just, we have the household hazardous waste days that are coming up in the month of May. That would be May 10th, the week of May 10th, and the week of May 17th. Everybody should have gotten a flyer. I guess everybody in town did, except for Mark Clinton. So, you didn't get one either? Wow, you're in a rough neighborhood. So I will have to, we'll have to continue to get the word out through social media and the website and everything.
One point of clarification, I've been asked. You can only go once per address, is that the case?
Well...
That's what it says on the flyer.
That's what it says, yeah.
Once per address.
Right. And no dogs allowed. Thought you'd like.
How about dead dogs?
Anyway, so that's what's going on there. I know Chief Phillips, you were administering COVID shots today over at Friendship Station. It really seems like, both in, around here at least, it seems like the process is fairly saturated. We do our best to get the word out through the county and the Canton Township, Plymouth City. Everybody's doing their part, but, you know, we're, I think we've reached a tipping point where I don't know if the public is really participating anymore. It seems like everybody who wanted one, got one.
Yeah, that's true. We do have three dates upcoming for second shots. We've been delivering the Pfizer vaccine, so we have three upcoming dates for the Pfizer shots. But yeah, it, the, the market is definitely saturated and we're having a hard time getting new people to come out.
Like that all over, yeah.
Allegedly, 20% say they're not ever going to get it.
Well, I was giving them today for Walmart and, yeah, we, we had problems trying to get people. So it's probably saturated.
Does anybody have any other questions for me at this time? Okay, Bob Dorchevitz.
Nothing here.
All set. John Stewart.
You have approved the idea of scouts coming to the meeting June 8th and then they would be working in Township Park, doing outdoor nature projects, cleanup, whatever, and maybe having a little fun. As an Eagle Scout from 1964, I, I want to welcome the scouts here on June 8th. I stopped at Township Park at the soccer park in Lake Point and I took a picture of a sign. I have no idea how many there are in the Township here. It reads, "No dogs, sanitary reasons." Is this in every park now? Mr. McMullin? Okay. Mr. McMullin got way off the track and we went off on tangents tonight, but there is a nine-issue memo that he emailed to me and they're very salient core points. I don't want to raise taxes or subject the taxpayers of Plymouth Township, the citizens, the people, to liability or increase taxes and how this is all gonna be monitored. But I, before we proceed, I would hope that somebody, that the board would try to answer these nine issues, core issues of going to the dogs. Thank you very much and good night.
Okay, Jerry Borba.
I'm fine, thank you.
Jerry, I do want to compliment Jerry for spearheading the new sound system here. I know we still have a few more bugs to work out, but this is a vast improvement over what we've been dealing with for many years. So thanks for taking care of that.
Thank you.
Mark Clinton.
All set.
Thanks for the golf cart thing too.
Yeah, very nice.
Audrey.
Nope, all set, thank you.
Chuck Kirmy.
Police Department, eventually, may we get an update on the accreditation timeline status and one of our objectives is to publish meaningful statistics on the website, where you are on that also. So just not today, when, not next week. We need to keep that on the radar screen because we're four month, the year is one-third over